We'll call this meeting to order at the City Council. It's May 7th. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, honor God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. Good to see folks out tonight. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Everyone is present, and we do have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there any changes to that agenda that we need to consider before we move forward? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling. Is there a second?
No.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion. No in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the City Council minutes for April 16th. Questions, comments, concerns about those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they're being prepared and go to the special City Council minutes of April 23rd. Same thing there. Any concerns with those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as well and go on to the bills. Very lengthy. Couple of big bills in there this time around. Questions on any of the bills?
I had one. I just wanted to know what the closing, what property, what property was that closing First American title for?
Peak Venture, isn't it?
What's the name of that? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hegeman, that was the closing of the lot sale to Peak Ventures.
Okay. I was going to say the name, but I knew I'd get it wrong. So I knew what it was, but I couldn't think of the... Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sellers.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. There's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Take care of the bills. We've got the revenue expenditure report from March. Questions on that report? If there is none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks with a motion. Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion. No in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Approve that report. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us tonight, sir?
I have a few things tonight.
Excellent.
One, thank you, Trudy, for that user-friendly, for the budget. That is so much easier than the binders we used to go through. Makes it a lot easier. And on the revenue and projections, that's all. Thank you. We appreciate that. And I handed these out. We have people here tonight that'll speak after, at the end of the council meeting. But the Union Pacific Railroad is donating the water tower to the Evanston Historical Preservation Commission, and I would like to see the mayor and council fund this and support it 100 percent. I think it's a great thing for the community, and it's been part of the plan for a long time. And I just really would like to see our support. Rick Eskelson will have a few words to say at the end of tonight's meeting, and he can give you a little more information. And if we can include it in next week's work session, we can brainstorm and make sure this comes to play. They've given us a timeframe on it. It's the urgency, and that's why I'm bringing it up. I just think it's a great thing for us to consider. And I had a concerned constituent about the I-80, the trucks coming in off the west end because it's exit three. They think, get off the third exit. They're seeing exit three. They think that's it. They're causing terrible congestion down on Front Street, on the corner of Harrison and Front. It's gonna, we're gonna have an episode. We've been lucky. And I want to thank Damon for getting the 30 mile an hour speed limit up. That is helping a little. But every little bit helps. But we need to somehow get the state convey with them to understand that not to get off on the first exit, to get off on the third exit, which was exit six, I believe. That needs to be directed a little better. That's all I got.
I'm hoping that that's kind of a work in progress over the course of the summer or something, huh?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Lind.
Just if Mother Nature's listening, I've had enough. So turn it off. I'm ready for spring and summer.
Well, if she wasn't listening, I hope she is now. So I'm aiming... Mr. Perks.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mr. Lind said, but summer's coming. I'm not gonna shut my mouth. No, I'm just gonna let him know.
Excellent. Mr. Welling.
I don't have anything tonight.
Nothing tonight. Mr. Sellers.
So Friday from 10:00 to 12:30, at the recycle center is, Trona Valley sponsoring the shred event. So you can bring all your stuff, and you can shred it. Trona likes to use this as a fundraiser for the backpack program. So if you're bringing things to shred, if you would please bring a food donation or money donation to help support the backpack program. They had, they're talking about not doing it again, so I think it'd be nice if we could really support it, because I think it's a great opportunity for our community to get rid of things that stack up in our houses and things that we don't know what to do with, because we just don't want to throw them in the garbage. So that's what I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Hegeman.
I'd like to remind everybody that next Thursday on the 16th is the National Veterans Awareness Escort. There is a Facebook page of the same name. There are multiple places to join the procession that comes through, starts in Utah. You can join it in Nevada, Linden, Roy, however you along you want to ride. It is supposed to be a beautiful day on Thursday, and it's a ride no one should miss. Sorry, frog in my throat. If you enjoy your freedoms, thank a veteran, they say. If you ride a motorcycle, this is your opportunity to show them your thanks. So I hope to see lots of participants from veterans, a lot more than I did last year. Also, I'd like to bring up a little something maybe we can keep going forward in the working sessions, and that is, I'd like to start discussing the need to hire a city manager with all the new business growth and opportunities that have been presented to Evanston and Euenta County. Evanston deserves full-time management. We have a part-time mayor. And currently, with everything coming our way, it would behoove us to start discussing a full-time position to maximize needed opportunities and manage spending on behalf of our citizens. We have not had a city planner in eight-plus years and a manager for longer than that. A city manager position also restores the checks and balance form of government our nation was founded upon, to prevent corruption, increase transparency, prevent unqualified appointments, to protect city and government employees from having their paychecks threatened, and continuous leadership through council and mayoral turnovers, which is an incredible advantage as we all rotate, as city manager does not, and can keep Evanston true and forward as we go forward. A city manager will, position will return Evanston to, in its intended republic form of city government. That's all.
Quite enough. The only thing I would add to Mr. Lind's comment is I was going to simply say I hope everybody enjoyed the summer, but maybe that's not an appropriate thing to say. We do have a board appointment to consider. Taylor Cofit has had to resign from the Parks and Rec Board. She's a busy young lady and has a young family, so we'll accept her resignation and express some appreciation for her service there. I'd like to bring forth the name of Jason Banks to serve a term, a three-year term Does that term in July of this year?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll reappoint. So this would just be until July 2024?
Yes.
And then, and then probably reappointment at that time. But anyway, we'll finish out the term of Taylor. So if somebody would like to make a motion to that effect for Mr. Banks.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Appreciate Jason's willingness to serve there. Is there any issues with our consent agenda before we move forward with it? We got four, five, I guess five items there. You comfortable with the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's been presented.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? I guess we don't need a discussion on the consent agenda, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That consent agenda is approved. We'll go on now to unfinished business, and we'll take up ordinance 2401. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, ordinance 2401, an ordinance approving and authorizing the final plat for the Burnt Hill addition located in the city of Evanston, Wyoming, being more particularly described herein. This is on second reading. Members?
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Jacobson, our city planner. Take us away.
Yes. I won't go through all of the details that I went through at first reading. There have been a couple of changes with the Burnt Hill addition. For those that may not be familiar with the location, it is located just north of West Cheyenne Drive. It's in the orange shaded areas shown on the screen, between West Cheyenne Drive and I-80, and between Overthrust Road and Yellow Creek Road. There is an area that I show in blue. I'll just point that out. That's owned by the city. There is a preliminary land dedication as part of this major subdivision that's proposed. There's a lot within the subdivision. You'll, you'll see on the plat, Lot 8 of Block 1. That will be, that's proposed for the public land dedication. It's used for a detention point, but it's lacking the 5 percent land dedication that the city code requires. So next to that blue shaded area is what's being considered to make up the remaining land to dedicate. So there have been some changes to the plat from when I first presented at first reading, and it involves lots 1, Block 1, and Lot 2, Block 1. And I'll just point that out real quick. So it's located on this side of these three lots. There was a change in the boundary of Lot, Lot 2. It's going to retain the, the same boundary as the current parcel, that All West Communications, that's who's located on Lot 2. They will retain the same boundary as what the parcel currently is. It's noted on the plat that there will not be access to their property off of West Cheyenne Drive. There is a, an access in utility easement, and I will kind of zoom up on that, shown in the orange area. It is a, I'm trying to recall the width on that, but I think it's a 50-foot width. So that, that would serve access to Lot 2 for All West across Lot 3. It would also serve Lot 1, Block 1, for access to that lot. Lot 1, Block 1 will also be accessible from West Cheyenne Drive. There, there has been a change in the public utility easement in that All West has requested that this... Public utility easement, they shifted over just outside of their property. They do have some fiber optic lines in there and would likely prefer not to have all the utilities within that. So there is a crossing, like I said, across with that orange shade, and they did, this is kind of hot off the press, we got this about an hour ago. So they have revised Note 1 on there, so the 50-foot wide shared access for lots 1 and 2, Block 1, that refers to the orange shaded area. And Item B would be including that as a public utility easement. And then C, there's a landscape irrigation access point for the benefit of J.G. Brothers LLC. I'm going to go back to, to that, so... Irrigation easement is right there, showing in the green. There is an access point where J.G. Brothers, they do have access currently to the city raw water line, irrigation line. But this, by providing this connection here... We provide continuity, the utilities, otherwise we've got a gap right there. So I think the note that they provided us late today, I think it works well with what's being proposed. I've gone through these maps. The lots are developable. They're adequately sized for the zoning that they're located in, so I won't go through all the details. And if anyone has any questions regarding that, here's, I'll just point this out real quick. That's the preliminary land dedication area to make up the difference from what Lot 8 is, since that's not adequately sized to meet our 5 percent land dedication. Any questions regarding this subdivision?
Seem like appropriate changes to me, and I assume Mr. Ellingford and everybody involved is aware and supportive.
Yeah, where we have received the change on the plat, I think it would be good to get All West to review this, make sure that they are okay as well.
Will they have a chance to do that before we go to third reading?
Yes, we would make sure that they're okay before third reading.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Anybody else?
I'm fine.
Excellent. Thank you.
Seems a little more functional now that we're able to access it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2401 on, on second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sellers. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lind, seconding. Any discussion? No discussion. No in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved on second reading, and then we'll wait to hear from the utility companies to make sure they're comfortable with that before we go to third reading.
Yeah, they're currently working on an agreement between the two, and yeah, we'll make sure that everything's in order before we bring it back for a third reading.
Excellent. Thank you. Ordinance 2402. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, ordinance, an ordinance approving and authorizing a zone change for property in the city of Evanston from low-density residential developing to rural residential 1, as requested by Tony Weaver of the land, more particularly described herein. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, since the last meeting, the planning director, Mr. Jacobson, received two protests to the zone change from landowners totaling more than 20 percent or more of the area of the lots included in a proposed zone change. Pursuant to Wyoming Statute 15-1-603A, that, those objections will require an affirmative vote of three-fourths of all members of the governing body. That means in order to pass, it will require six affirmative votes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate that information. Mr. Jacobson.
So this is the area that's proposed for the, the zone change. It's these eight lots that are highlighted. It is situated between the two neighborhoods of Brook Hollow to the west and Aspen Grove Neighborhood to the east. The Evanston Comprehensive Plan does show this area as low-density residential land You do have some rural residential land use just south of that property, as shown as the future land use, as a rural residential. What's proposed, well, current, current zoning of the property is low-density residential developing. You do have some larger lots within the Aspen Grove Neighborhood, as zoned low-density residential, .5, which is a half acre, but less than an acre. There are some lots that are non-conforming within the Aspen Grove Neighborhood that are larger than an acre, and that, which is okay. And then property within the Brook Hollow subdivision is zoned low-density residential established. The LRD zoning designation, it was zoned that years ago. That does provide, doesn't have a maximum lot size requirement, so it is a good zoning designation if you're developing on slope property, which this has quite a bit of property that is, that has some significant slopes. So what's being proposed is to change the LRD zoning designation to a rural residential 1 zoning designation, which would allow horses on, on these lots, one animal per acre. And that, the land use code, the only change between the two zoning districts is that a rural residential zone would permit manufactured housing, whereas in the present zone, low-density residential developing, manufactured homes would be prohibited. Other than that, most everything, as far as the land uses go, is the same between the two zoning districts. There are some changes with setback requirements between the low-density residential zone and a rural residential 1 with larger lots in the rural residential 1 zone. There are some larger front yard and side yard, rear yard setback distance requirements. There is one house on Lot 1, which is located right here. Has the accessory building, garage on the lot with the change in zoning. Presently, the garage meets the setback requirements from the side yard property line. With the change in zoning, it would not meet those side yard setbacks. It would become a non-conforming structure. So a non-conforming structure can continue to exist until such time that it's removed, destroyed, and then the replacement of that would have to comply with current setback requirements unless a variance is granted by the Board of Adjustment to allow the garage to be reconstructed. Other than that, it appears that the zone change would not affect any, any other buildings within the subdivision. The Planning Commission has reviewed the proposed zone change. They've offered, they forwarded a negative recommendation to change the zone.
Okay. Thank you. I do know that these kinds of issues have a tendency to involve a great many landowners, and these are some sensitive issues. Is there, I'll open it up. Is there someone here that would like to speak regarding this before we make a decision on this? I've got, I've got a question myself. Maybe, Mr. Jacobson, you can answer it. It's my understanding, and at least I'm, I'm led to believe that, that the Weavers have put their property on the market for sale. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, I can, I just showed that to Councilman Lynn. It is an active residential property for sale right now on Wyoming MLS.
Okay. Thank you. I guess that is of concern to me. I guess the Weavers certainly have the ability to put their property on the market and sell it, and I hope they, I hope they're able to sell it, and that's a successful venture for them. I guess in my mind, it does affect this request a little bit, and maybe I would hesitate to approve it with that pending, thinking that if a future property owner, whoever might buy it, wants to pursue the same course, then that's certainly be with their right. But in my mind, this would probably be a, something that I would be a little more reluctant to, to approve now, but that's just me. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2402 on second reading.
I'll make that motion so we can move this along, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Perks.
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to explain my position. I voted for this originally because I was thinking, kind of selfish motives, if I owned one of these lots, that I'd probably want a horse or some sort of animal on there to keep all the weeds and everything else down. But after visiting it and looking at the covenants that are in place and having two lots that become non-conforming, there's just too many negatives. I'm going to have to change my vote from what it was the first, first reading, because I, I just can't see changing this, the zoning on this right now. But I wanted everybody to understand, well, I'm flip-flopping, because I did educate myself on this, and that's what I said during the last meeting, that, that I wanted time to look at it, and I've looked at it, and I've changed my mind, so...
Thank you. Further discussion?
I think that, you know, it's a complex situation of where it's located. The covenants, a lot of the members of the community spoke earlier, and they weren't aware of the covenants. Wyoming has such a strong, strong foundation in history, and it's ironclad in our constitution of land rights for landowners. And I feel, although it's doomed, because eventually progress will impede, and I've seen it driven out too many times in equestrian divisions, one animal per acre is not a huge... I mean, that's incredibly reasonable. Most in-town equestrian facilities are one horse per half acre. Some of them are even two. So it goes down to the covenants about pest control and things like that. But I do see it as a, as the city grows and goes around it, it will come before us again. But we are, we are a state that is defined by our live and let live, so...
I still keep the same position I had before. I don't think it sets a good precedent to go from what's already zoned within the master plan, and I am pro-growth for this community, so I feel like we'd be going backwards if we went to a rural residential zoning in that area. Plus, I don't like some of the doors it opens as well of what can happen with subdivisions and some of the buildings that can be put there. I don't think the residents around it would be real particularly happy with those doors opening. So, yeah, I'm still a no vote.
Further discussion? If there is none, all in favor of ordinance 2402, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by nay?
Nay.
Nay. That's one, one, one yes? That's one, one, one yes? Did I hear that right?
Yep.
Okay. So that, that fails on second reading. Appreciate that, and I wish, wish the Weavers good luck in all of their endeavors and no, no, no ill will toward them whatsoever. I hope they recognize that. We'll go on to new business, and we'll start there with a motion to accept a low bid for the Bear River walkway.
Mayor, Council, Kim Larson, Evanston Parks and Rec District. If you recall, earlier in the year, we had put out to bid to do a renovation for a section of walkway around the Bear Meadows. That came back too high, so we went back, scaled our project down a bit, put the bid out again. Had two bids this time, the lowest one being from Greco LLC, which came in within our budget. So I would recommend moving forward with that bid.
They're, they're a local company?
Yes, they are from Evanston, and the subcontractors are as well.
I'm trying to find it on my computer here, but I'm not finding it at the moment. What you say was within our budget?
Yes.
What was the bid?
The bid was $84,500, and our budget was $100,000.
Okay.
I don't see those two motions in here.
Yeah, it's not on there.
Refresh everyone's memory what we're doing, what the project is.
Oh, okay. So the
Talking about it, but I don't remember.
Bear Meadows. Everyone is familiar with Bear Meadows?
Yes.
It has concrete around as the walkway, except for the old section on the north side near the river. That is old asphalt. Over the years, the trees grow under it, becomes very bumpy, rooted. So we wanted to replace the entire section from Bear River Drive clear to the overpass. That was just too expensive. We had the money there, so we're going to at least do the section around Bear Meadows so people can have a nice concrete walkpath around Bear Meadows.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are they going to put the animal prints in it like they did on that other section?
Oh, possibly. Maybe we could find those.
I think it's pretty cool.
They're pretty cool.
The kids love it. If you watch the little kids playing on it, they love it.
You'd have to round up the animals again, wouldn't you not?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. Those are all naturally occurring. I mean.
We can get one of the councilmen to go.
Those are fake? I thought that was real.
I thought they were real.
Yeah, you just.
You just burst my bubble. I thought those were real.
I thought all those animals walked a little funny, but I thought they were real. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this, accept this bid for the Bear River Walkway.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lynn for the motion. Mr. Willing with the second. Any discussion? I think everybody uses that walkway. I know my wife and I do quite often. It's nice to have.
Yes, they do. We'll get the rest of it later on down the road. So, thank you.
Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved. Excuse me. Now we need to consider a motion to appoint a voting delegate for our WAM summer convention. Don't everybody touch their nose, and, ah, WAM alternate, thank you. Just don't everybody touch their nose at once. I guess the question I've got is who all is able to go to WAM here?
I'm planning on it.
Okay.
I nominate Mike Sellers.
Got a nomination from Mr. Sellers? Are you able to go, Mr. Lynn?
Not to the summer.
Not to anybody else? So it's just the three of us? Well, I think you've made an excellent motion then. So are you going to include in your motion?
Oh, an alternate of Mayor Williams.
Yeah.
I don't know that I could be a voting delegate being on the board. Can I?
I don't know yet.
Maybe not. Mark?
Pardon?
Am I able to be a voting delegate being on the board? WAM board?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
No.
You just.
Yes, you can.
I'm not too nervous about being the alternate, because I assume Mr. Sellers will be there and be able to vote. So I'm sort of confident that I won't have to be called into, into service there. So good, good, good conference. So we've got a motion to appoint Mike Sellers as our voting delegate, delegate, and me as the, as the alternate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That takes care of that. Did I do that right?
Yeah, nobody wants to oppose it.
I don't think we got a second.
Do we have a second? I guess maybe we better do that again, because you've made a motion. Was there a second to that motion? Let's start over.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Mr. Perks will be our second. Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That didn't feel right to me for a second. So thank you, Ms. Harris. Now we'll go on to ordinance 2403. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, ordinance 24-03, an ordinance approving and authorizing the final plat for the Gateway Edition located in the city of Evanston, Wyoming, being more particularly described herein. This ordinance is sponsored by Council member Lynch.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes. So the Gateway Edition's located on the west side of Prospector Drive, just off of Exit 3, west side of the city. You can see Interstate 80 where that's located, running with the red line just in the upper, upper left hand, or left-hand corner. It does involve lots that are addressed 755 Prospector Drive and 493 Prospector Drive. The 493 Prospector Drive has been developed for the Porter's Fireworks Store. So that's a little bit of an older photograph. So the Gateway Edition proposes to adjust the property boundary lines between the two properties. Lot 1, Block 1 of the Gateway Edition will become a little bit shorter at 2.102 acres. Lot 2, Block 1 is, will be 5.883 acres. The zoning for this property is highway business established, so the minimum lot size requirement in the highway business zone is 6,000 square feet. So the proposed lots do comply with the minimum lot size requirement. What's kind of driving this subdivision as a major subdivision is, one, we are changing the boundaries of the subdivision to the east, and, two, we have Prospector Drive where the improvements have been installed up to
The end of this property here.
None of the road improvements have been extended to the west. So this is being reviewed as a major subdivision. The developer of Lot 2 is proposing to, well, he's proposing a development on the lot for an OTB. That will include a bar and lounge area, liquor store. Those uses have been gone through review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and have been approved. Staff have been reviewing a site development plan proposal for that. The site development plan, and I don't know if I have, there we go. The site development plan does show kind of access through the site, and you'll see that there's an access point off this blue shade through here. This will be a fire access. This point will be a gated access. Two, we'll go back to the plat, to this 30-foot emergency services access easement. It also serves as a drainage easement, and then there's a shared joint access drainage easement showing in the green area here. The 10-foot utility easement, there's, there's a couple of buildings that extends to the adjacent subdivision. So that will just extend on now to the end of Lot 2. The, the road is proposed to develop in phases. So Phase 1 is the blue shaded area. They propose to go just beyond their approach into their parking lot.
This parking lot here. And then Phase 2 will go just beyond their future parking lot here when they develop that lower parking lot. Phase 3 in the purple would occur at
such time that development would occur either to the west or south of the property. Or I believe our city attorney is working on, on an agreement with their attorney. There may be, I don't know, a timeframe where it all becomes, they'll have to make the improvements after, I guess, so many years, maybe. I don't know. So if the property develops to the south or west of the property, and they have not developed a future parking lot, then Phase 2 and Phase 3 of that would need to be installed. That's, that's the plan for the phasing. Just like to point out, too, I did throw in a Google Earth photograph that's kind of recent, shows John Porter's Fireworks Store. There is some oversized parking that is showing up here along the west side of the property. That is also the 30-foot emergency access easement. And the, the plan is, is, is to eventually, well, to relocate those. And, and it does provide him room for building expansion. If he expands building out to, towards the west, he can push his parking lot out towards that access easement, where that would become an access aisle and emergency access. So, so John Porter, he's, he's aware of the 30-foot access easement. He's okay with it. So that's about it.
Okay. Any questions before we move forward with this? We've got a sponsor, and so I entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2403 on first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynn? Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion?
It's nice to see that whole area getting expanded and growing. I think it's a good thing for our community.
Yes.
I'd like to see us do everything we can as a city to help these gentlemen every way we possibly can, because this is a great investment in our community. So.
Further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to Resolution 2424. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 24-24 is a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a commercial alarm system agreement for Alarm and Fire Protection Services with Fire Protection Service Corporation.
Mayor, members of the council, excuse me, Rocco O'Neill, Community Development. We're in the process of upgrading the fire panels at our different facilities across the city. And this is essentially a master agreement that will incorporate all of those future panels into one, one contract instead of doing individual contracts for each fire panel.
Seems like an appropriate thing to do. Any questions for Mr. O'Neill before we act on this? Is there introduction on this resolution? I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Lynch with a motion. Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion?
Did we get a bid on this? Because State Fire has an, it's Fire Protection Service Corporation who are buying them for, and are they Wyoming company? Are they a Salt Lake company? Because State Fire is a Wyomingian Salt Lake. Did we get a bid?
I would have to look into it. Mark, do you have?
Mr. Mayor, we, Councilmember Hagaman, we did not. There is an existing, there are two existing agreements. One for the Beeman-Cashen Building and one for the Evanston Police Department Building. So we're combining those agreements into one master agreement. That's what this agreement does. If there are further installations for cell service or alarm service, then the facilities director would have to make sure they're in the budget, and then, and then the facilities department could add those consistent with their budgetary limitations.
Any further discussion?
Expensive upgrade.
If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's, departments, Mr. O'Neill, while you're still standing, do you have anything more for us tonight?
Nothing more, Mayor.
Ms. Lim?
Sir?
Mr. Newsom?
Chief Rannish?
I would like to, I have some lost pieces for the week, so if you're missing anything, I'm saving.
Oh, nice. Larson?
My mind.
Is that to save everybody? Set it over here. Ms. Harris? Senior. Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Hagaman brought up the question about the closing costs. I was going to report that on the first of May, we did close the sale of Lot 2, a Block 1 of the second addition to Peak Ventures. And I think I got back on the county's GIS website, and it's already been transferred over. So it's on the tax rolls.
Absolutely. That in and of itself is a good thing. That is, that is an excellent thing. And I think they'll be an excellent, an excellent community partner. We're excited.
Sorry, wait, yeah. He, I think he indicated, Mr. Cox, that they were, they hired Myers Anderson, didn't they?
I think I heard that.
Their facility.
Yeah. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Strong work, by the way, to everybody involved. Rocco, Harris, good, good work, strong work. Public participation. Is there anybody here from the public that'd like to address the council for any reason? Please.
Rick Ashelson. Take you back three years ago, the mayor, Rocco, and I got together with Nathan Anderson from Union Pacific. And we brought up the fact that, I think he was working on the powerhouse, trying to get that from Union Pacific. At the same time, I asked, I would like to see the water tower brought up here. Give you a little history. It took me, oh, a year to figure out how to approach a big corporation like Union Pacific. But about a year ago, I come up with an idea, and I bug the heck out of Nathan Anderson every two weeks for a year. And he's a super guy. He is really a super guy. And we kind of come friends a little bit. And he finally got this donated to us. And it isn't donated to the Evanston Historic. It's RINK right now. It's the Roundhouse Restoration Incorporated. And so in December, we got a hint, finally, that they may give it to us. And we had to do it through a nonprofit to give it to us, because at one time, they wanted to charge years ago, like corporations do. So we was able, by December, had a hint. January, we had a bigger hint by the people they sent out to look at it. And sometime in February, a guy named Matt Janson from Union Pacific said, like to talk to us. So we sat down on the phone, and he says, we're going to give it to you. Now, he said, all the paperwork's done, all the lawyers, everything is done to give it to the RINK and that. So that's how we got up for nothing, was to go through the, that. Since then, and what they have allowed us to do, they want us to set a date when we can coordinate the money and everything to do this, and then give us 180 days to move it. So whether it's come September, 180 days takes it in the winter, or next spring. But we'd like to do it now, while we still have some good weather coming up. So that's how it will work. It doesn't matter when we say, okay, we're ready to do It doesn't matter when we say, okay, we're ready to do this, they'll give us a hundred and eighty days to move it. And I spent a lot of time climbing on it, going under it, checking out everything. We pull the roof off, then the tank, and then the pillars. And I'm requesting that if you guys have nothing to do on a good day, go out and look at it, stand by it, take a look at it. Because it's, we took, it took us two months to figure out how old that thing is. We just found out a week and a half ago. It was built out there in nineteen seventeen. So it's a hundred and seven years old. You can probably count on one hand how many tanks in the United States worth saving anymore out there. There's a lot of tanks or places where they used to be, but this is the exception. Over the period of the last three years, I found out Coldwell wanted it, Morgan wanted it, and definitely Ogden wanted it. It is a jewel sitting out there. If you understand the history of trains, you pee. And like we've talked before, Union Pacific, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Union Pacific needing coal and water. And so the history out there, and then eventually moving into Evanston with the roundhouses and the different stuff, there's a lot of history there. And if you, I don't know if you've passed out the paper, if you look at that, that's the rendition of it sitting right out here off the corner of the city parking lot and the machine shop out in the dirt. People from Front Street will be able to see it eventually as we can do it. It'll be lit up, you know, be signage to let people know. There's out there, we have blueprints that was made up eight, nine years ago. We know how much it weighs. We know how it was all put together. We have a place where we're going to want to pour cement down the road, and visitors can walk out there. One of the things we found out, I put out looking for bids about two weeks, three weeks ago, I got two bids in. And the bids on the blueprints we got eight, nine years ago showed that just the footings would run us about forty-six thousand dollars. So bring us to the present day, one bid was seventy-five and the other bid was a hundred and eighteen. So I went out, re-looked at it, and if you notice the numbers on there, the tower by itself weighs twenty-three ton, really close around there. If it was full of water, it'd add two hundred and seventy-one ton to it. So that was built back in nineteen seventeen to withhold the tank, the water, over three hundred ton. So I took a little look at it, and right now I just have to get it approved by some work script. And take and get rid of the middle cement part and do pillars coming out of the ground. We cut the, right now it's two hundred and forty dollars a yard. One contractor said it'll take eighty-four yards, twenty thousand dollars worth of cement alone. And we've cut that back if everything is, we can put it together, half that. We just, by putting the cement pillars down, you have to dig the footings out, put a footing in there, it'd be fifteen inches thick by three and a half foot, and then use son of tubes come up. And it'll cut the labor, probably two-thirds, and the material by half. So I have asked both contractors to re-look at it based on that. I just got word today from Kevin Wagstaff, who moved the locomotive three years ago, three and a half, and his bid to go, come up here with a crew, the crane, and we lift the roof off, lift the tank off, and lift the legs off, and we have a donation, pretty well, of a Lowboy semi. And they'll put it on there and bring it up the Wasatch Road, four miles out in the dirt, hit the pavement on Wasatch. I have already talked to Rocky Mountain Power. They will take care of, donate the time to move wires. We need to get it because even the tank sitting on the Lowboy will be twenty-four, twenty-five feet high. But it looks like all the wires can be taken care of, and that'll be taken care of by Rocky Mountain. I'm back to Kevin Wagstaff, the crane guy. He gave a bid of twelve grand to come up and spend the day, take all that off, put it on the Lowboy, bring it up, and we have to have the footings first and set, and he'll reset that in one day. But some of the costs, the bolts we have to have can go from a hundred to two hundred dollars a piece, and there is twelve posts that have to be bolted to, you know, to the cement. And I'm working on any of the prices, and it's more of not in cement. It's more of to give the city an idea of our idea to bring it up here. What it'll cost to do? And it'll be something, if you've seen some old pictures of Evanston, the old water tank, which I believe is like two hundred, a hundred and twenty gallons, I can't remember, a hundred and twenty thousand gallon, used to sit where you could see it from Front Street, I believe. And it'll sit just over from it, so it'll bring back that look as you're coming down Front Street. So I would like you to consider that, and I'll have a lot more figures and everything on this, if we can discuss it in May next Tuesday's work meeting. And I'll get you all the information I can, contractors, everything, so you'll have an idea. And I would give, I'm going to give you a rest estimate of about seventy-five thousand with miscellaneous stuff because we've got to take the inner pipe out and the valve. And that I have K. Dunford going out, take a look at it because of the cross members. That tank is sitting on the cross members, six inch I-beams. I think it's slightly welded. Then you have ten inch I-beams running under them. That tank is sitting on there, but the I-beams to I-beam is just bolted. So you can almost just go up there and take those bolts out, lift up the tank, have to take the roof off, and the six inch I-beams underneath, which Kevin Wagstaff asked me about, will be where we can hook on to the cables to lift it off the legs. That's how far in what I've got into this doing. So three years, finally got it. So I would like the council and the mayor and the city to consider what this would mean here at the Roundhouse. So anyway.
It's a valuable work session discussion, sir. I appreciate it. And if, when we have that discussion, if, the more information, the better as far as some definite cost projections and what that might look like, that's going to, that's going to benefit us greatly.
Yeah, and we've got blueprints from eight years ago on the whole setup, so I can bring that and other information I'm looking for.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Can I make a comment about the water tower?
Please.
I think it'd be a great idea considering we don't have any kind of real signage, you know, advertising the rail yards or anything like that. At some point, we're probably going to have to do some sort of, hey, this is where the rail yards are. Be able to do it with this water tower would be pretty sweet.
For an out-of-town visitor, it'd be wonderful to have something like this that they can try it over there.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think we're going to have to eventually do something to say, hey, here's the rail yards. So to do it this way would be pretty cool, so...
If possible. Excellent.
Great idea.
Anyone else?
Just going to float this. When it comes to the water tower, you know, we need to come up with a lot of money, but we have the big boy rolling through town, which is incredibly advantageous. What if the city got involved and helped throw a big shindig and helped the Historic Commission? Maybe we can take some money out of the city council and rent the first section of the Roundhouse when it rolls through, invite vendors, give, you know, give one dollar spins on our turntable, have, do some T-shirts and all come together and put, we have a big, I mean, we had, what, four thousand people come through the last time, the big, we can, we can raise some serious funds, go through Facebook, social media, and with the city behind this, we have a real anchor to helping them and make a lot of, turn this, turn this great adventure of the big boy coming here into something that can help save the forty-four twenty and the people that are going to come and the, and the water tower and the people that are going to come to see the big boy are just the type of people who want to save the forty-four twenty and the water tower.
Could be. That's probably a good, a good addition to that work session agenda discussion. Excellent. Both issues. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn.